Welcome to today, the nineteenth of April Planning Board Meeting. They're gonna now call us to order and the time is about seven oh two. Let me just remind everyone to, when they speak, to make sure your microphone is on. Introduce yourself before you tell us what you have to say. Next is the Planning and Zoning Administrators, actually, I apologize, Nelson, I always skip over you. Before we move on, Nelson, let me appoint you to a full voting member for Jamie Von Schoen. And I believe everybody else here. I'll have to put Ms. Tracy in for Chairman Bob, to make you a full voting member tonight as well. Yes. That should be it. Casey, what do you have for the Planning and Zoning Administrators Report?
Uh, nope, nothing tonight at all.
Nothing tonight?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we can move right on to our first and only item tonight, which is John Flatley Company. This is Continued Review for Acceptance and Consideration of Final Approval for a Site Plan to Construct Two Forty-Eight Unit Apartment Buildings in Addition to the Existing Two Hundred and Forty Units, in According with the Most Recent Amended Flatley Mixed Use Conditional Use Permit. The parcel is located at Five Gilbert Crossing in the I One Industrial Aquifer Conservation and Elderly Housing Overlay District and Wellhead Protection Area. That's Tax Map Six E Lot Zero Zero Three Dash Zero Seven, Case Number Planning Board Twenty Twenty Two Dash Zero Seven. This item is continued from the January Eighteenth, March First, April Fifth Planning Board Meetings. The applicant in front of us, please introduce yourself. I know we've seen you before, so if you just wanna touch on some points, any updates you have for us to refresh our memory, floor is yours.
Nathan Chamberlain with Field Steel Land Consultants. We're here for an expansion of the-
Mike?
Microphone.
Oh yeah, there we go, is that better? Thank you. Green light's gotta be on. For an expansion of the Gilbert Crossing, multifamily development that was approved in two thousand sixteen. So, is it gonna show up at there? There you go, alright. Lights, camera, action, okay. So this project was approved in two thousand sixteen for five units. It's part of an overall conditional use permit for, uh, the entire Flatley project, which is everything you see on that locust plan except for in the middle, which is Saint Gobain. It says Saint Gobain is Six Three, uh, Six E Dash Three Dash Two. And then Flatley owns, John Flatley Company owns, um, all the other parcels around it. And so, conditional use permit, they started with the conditional use permit, I think in two thousand fourteen, or it was originally approved in two thousand fourteen. And the apartments were part of that. But it's in the industrial zone, and so, they're required to build a commercial component, which at this point is what we call the Flex Site, which is right in front of the Saint Gobain here, this area, which was approved last year and is ready to get undergoing, uh, get going construction. Only thing they're waiting on is the DOT permit, uh, which is forthcoming. It's, you know, working with DOT, especially in these times, is extremely, uh, extremely difficult, extremely lengthy, so it's taken a long time to get that. That's being done by Van Ness Associates. So anyway, that's, you know, they've been wanting to get going on that for the past several months, and they should be getting going on that shortly. So this was, the apartments were originally approved of five units, and then last year around this time, it was May, it was, uh, that conditional use permit was amended to allow two additional apartment buildings. With the stipulation that either the Flex Site or the High Bay Site, which is on the north end of the property, uh, gets under construction first. So, that should be happening soon, and then they'll be going on this. So as far as the merits of this project, uh, so, as I mentioned, it was built, it was originally approved in two thousand sixteen and built through two thousand seventeen. Fully occupied, so we're proposing to add a building up front here and a building in the back. Uh, this parking lot is built, and then this is the access drive, so they're probably talking, we're proposing some parking spaces here, with an additional parking space, um, in the front of it, and then same thing back here, initial parking area with a garage alongside of it. You get more detail as you go through the plans, um... I mean, so that's the same sheet. So we have some existing conditions plans, we went on as-built, the improvements as they are currently, and kinda meshed that with the original existing conditions plan. So that's provided in the plan set. This is per staff recommendation coming out of the plan set. They asked us to separate the lot line adjustment plan, which is approved a couple of months ago, uh, from this set, so that's, this is more of an exhibit plan at this point. And then we have a soils management plan, and then we get into the actual site plan, the meat and potatoes. So as I mentioned, the, uh, the existing parking end is like right here currently. And so they're proposing to build this, you know, saw cut the edge of the existing driveway and build these spaces. This is around twenty, twenty-two spaces there, additional, and then, uh, build this new parking field over here with the garage. So basically the garage will screen the parking field from the street. And that gives you fifteen spaces. The one thing that's transpired since it was originally approved is the town adopted new site plan regulations, and part of those regulations included in the parking calculation. So when we do the current parking calculation, we have more than enough parking spaces. That's why there's not a lot of parking being added for these buildings. Which is a good thing, so... And then, as I stated, so the required number of parking spaces under the new rules is, um, four hundred and seventy-one. And with these proposed spaces and the existing all combined, we have, uh, six hundred and twenty-nine spaces. And some of that's obviously for the clubhouse, but this is more for like overflow parking, guest parking type thing. This very, and we also have, so before it was required, they added two charging stations right here that wasn't on the original site plan. So, there's, these are two vehicles, charging stations, um, but we are also proposing additional charging stations as part of this site plan. These, you know, electric, electric vehicles seem to be all rage currently. And then they also have the ability to put charging stations within these garage bays for the people who wanna rent those. I'm pretty sure they have no problem renting these garage bays. Um, and one thing, there is a handicap space, there's one handicap bay in the garage in the middle. Each garage has a handicap, uh, bay in the middle. And then we do have, you know, proposed handicap spaces in the, at the front of the buildings, just like the rest of the site. We meet, we have more than enough handicap spaces provided throughout the site. So this is the front building, um, pretty straightforward. Talked about the parking, it's really not a lot of stuff being added, other than the parking areas in the building. You know, all the utilities are already on-site. If we screen down at the back, so this is the rear building. As I stated, this parking area was already built as part of the original development, so we are saw cutting this and expanding it out for a few additional spaces here. And the existing, uh, access drive to the detention basin, the storm on management area is right here. So we're relocating that over to the edge to get down in there for maintenance. Now, I know the, uh... The fire department just came out with comments since these plans were submitted, and we had met with the fire department early on, so we kinda knew what they were looking for. Uh, I'm gonna go back a page here, so... He, they talk about two emergency access routes, which really aren't fully depicted here, but we can get them on here. I guess I should go back to the very... Very fir-, the, the overall to get, so we can get a full... That doesn't really show it either, but, um... When the, when the fire chief talks about access road, there was one across the front of the site here. It's not really shown, and it, it's off the page and it ties into Daniel Webster Highway over here where the, basically the entrance to the old fish hatchery is, or adjacent to it. And it cuts across the site. But that's been, this was all used for staging area when they built the development, so that's been rerouted down to, uh, that connects over here now. So, that's just a little side, and then the other one that these referencing is down here. They go down the railroad tracks. So those were maintained in the original development. It comes off, right now, it goes like right down through here, but, but we're proposing to come off this new parking lot and tie it in and continue to go down there, so... They've been accounted for, I think what's shown in the current plan is a little narrower than what he is looking for, so we just have to widen those up a little bit. That's right here. So that'll have to get a little bit wider.
Can you show that first one again, the one that's up above? I, I didn't quite follow you there.
Well, it really doesn't, unfortunately, it doesn't really show up.
Doesn't seem to show on my plan either.
No, it's, it's not showing on here, but if you, uh... I don't know, if you have your packet, do you have a-
Yep.
It appears to be on the satellite.
Yeah, I have a-
If you look at the aerial on the packet that was provided.
I have the aerial too.
If you look at this.
Yep.
You can see it right here, it goes across and cuts through the field. That's what, that's what the fire chief is referring to. Yes, yep.
Where does it come on? Well, it doesn't show on there, right before the fishery, or hatchery.
Yeah, it's just at the top of the page there.
Yeah, it doesn't connect through, that's not right.
No, it, it connects to the highway, oh, connect through to the site?
Yeah.
It does, right through here, the staging area, and then it comes into this parking area. And that is shown on the plan. Right here, see this gravel drive? So that goes up and through, and then cuts over here. But we'll definitely amend the plan to get that shown on there, and make sure it's up to the requirements he's looking for. Cause like I said, that just came through before this plan was submitted, or after this plan was submitted.
And they're looking to drive a vehicle on that?
Yes, oh, they drive, they, you know, they use that for a hall road, and they drove dump trucks through there and everything, so...
And how does it cross the wetland, or the, the stream there? Wait, after it gets off your property, where does it go?
There's no stream.
Uh, well, if you go far enough, there is, right?
Uh, in the front of the property.
There's a wetland in the front, but there's no stream, the stream's over here. Nelson, make sure your microphone is on. Uh, that access road enters onto the main road before you get to the stream. Yes.
Oh, okay.
As you drive by, you see the gate there.
Got it, I remember now.
Yeah, it's just, it's just the south of the fish, the old fish hatchery.
Okay, I remember now.
So... Yeah, we're gonna accommodate those comments on the, you know, the final plan that gets submitted to the town. So this is the, the second building, you know, we have the same thing, the garage, fifteen parking spaces here, and we are adding a handful off the end. There is a retaining law proposed, uh, but it's all outside the, the wetland setback. This has been reviewed by the state, um, for the alteration of terrain. It's been reviewed by the, uh, river advisory, local river advisory committee, as that, uh, uh, Nelson is aware of. And so we did receive our state, our AOT permit just this morning, so, that has been approved. And again, there's some minor, there's some minor tweaks that happened after this plan was submitted that will be on the final plan. One of them is this treatment swale here, at the top of the page, is now routed, it doesn't have this hook in it, and it goes straight down over to this, uh, head wall basically, and into the, the infiltration basin. I mean, there's not a lot of flow in this thing, but, you know, they're, they're concerned... AOT really had us isolate the flow to the brook, which, you know, we did it the same way the original one was done, and they wanted us some tweaks, and so that necessitated us to route this over to here instead. So that'll be on the final plan as well. It's just a minor change, everything else is, uh, as far as the grading goes, it all meets ADA requirements. We basically, we have this a little bit of new pavement along the driveway that we are capturing in this catch basin and routing over to here along with the roof. So these roofs have downspouts, you know, they have a gutter system and downspouts bring it down, so we have a roof drain collector system. Uh, it's a four-story building, so you don't want that coming off the roof and going onto the ground. That's being routed over to this location as well, and then we have this parking area, and we also have some flow coming off the existing driveway into the, the field here that we're sweeping around our garage and getting into this little piece of closed drainage system. That's all that's feeding the swales, this parking lot, the garage, and this front lawn area basically. And then that's being conveyed down to this treatment swale, and then into the storm on management basin, which also provides treatment. So, you're really getting double treatment here, because this, the roof and this front parking area is being routed to thi- this location. We initially were gonna put a little, uh, infiltration basin here, but the test bit, the seasonal was too high, and so we just routed down to the existing infiltration basin. So this, this is a treatment swale as well, so we have two treatment swales here, providing treatment before it even goes in here. And this, this inf-, the existing infiltration basin has enough depth to seasonal to provide the treatment as well, so it's getting double treated basically, uh... So we-
Mr., not to cut you off, Mr. Chamberlain, uh, New Hampshire DES has you treating, I mean, it's one big site, but the apartment side is not being treated wastewater-wise the same as like the High Bay and the light industrial units?
Correct, so, so when this was done, it was all, it happened all before the PFOA contamination came to light. It was all approved before then, then it came to light-
No, yeah, I'm aware.
During construction, so-
But I mean, this is new construction, I'm just curious as to why New Hampshire DES is still fine with you operating under pretenses you were before the whole PFOA?
So I guess the, we did, we did, you know, we had a lot of testing done on the site, and the, the levels are such, they're light enough here, there wasn't a concern. And so you basically have the same, you already, you already have the infiltration BMP, and we're not adding a lot to it, and you have the same rain falling from the sky and washing the stuff anyway, so it's really... They, they were able to grant the waiver to, can you, to continue using the infiltration practices.
Okay.
I mean, the whole site was designed for infiltration, so... It didn't really make a lot of sense to change that for these two buildings when the entire site is already being infiltrated. And like I said, the, the, the levels were such that they were, you know, below, uh, what was causing a concern, so, um... Anyway, so, that's-
When you say the whole site, you mean the whole, uh, residential development?
The existing development, yeah.
Yeah, Gilbert Crossing site, not the whole site.
Yeah, right, right, yes, I'm sorry, yes, the Gilbert Crossing site.
That's back to my point, that it's a hundred and fifty yards away from...
Yep.
I mean, I'm not an atmospheric engineer, but I mean, we have wells and MVDs that are contaminated that are way far more away than a hundred and fifty yards, but we don't have any-
Right.
-jurisdiction over that. Just curious about NHDES's, uh, decision-making capabilities, go ahead.
Alright. I guess, you know, but anyway, so we are, we are treating, you're pretty much double treating that there. Uh, the other one, again, we had more than enough depth to seasonal here. We have, even with what we're doing, we still have like six feet to seasonal, so. And it's a similar, similar setup. You know, this is, this was already going down there, so we added a catch basin here, and we're again collecting the roof runoff, and it's being connected on either end. Uh, this one goes to the existing drainage system, that one goes to propose, and then the rest of it's just sheet flowing in. We do have, so we have the she-, this parking area sheet flowing, and we're directing that to a little, uh, level spreader right here. And then you get, again, you get, so that's really acting as pre-treatment, and then it's all getting down to this existing, infiltration basin. So that's... Fairly straightforward as far as the drainage goes. Uh, the utilities, as I mentioned, we're just tying into the existing utilities, we're able to do that here.
MVD didn't have any input as to, uh, the, the-
Capacity?
Yeah, the capacity remaining at the site is big enough to handle another two.
Yeah, so we had extended the, a twelve-inch main.
To an eighteen, I believe.
No, well, we, they have, they had a twelve-inch, and then they had a six-inch, so they run parallel on the side of the road. So we extended the twelve-inch, uh, to service the whole development back when we did this project.
Gotcha.
So... Uh, this one we do have to bring some utilities around the back of this existing building to service, uh, the new one, instead of cutting up the pavement. Again, it would be serviced by underground, uh, utilities. And the sewer ties in the back here. This has gone through, through a review by the, you know, town's review engineer. Landscaping, we've got some pretty extensive landscaping, we do have to reposition this landscape berm, unfortunately. Right now, it's like right in here underneath the building, so we're reconstructing that in the back. And, you know, removing, resetting all the landscaping that's in it, and then, you know, we have a lot of trees proposed around the, the proposed building, a lot of trees and shrubs on both buildings really, to meet the town's, uh, landscaping requirements. And then as far as lighting goes, you know, we, there's existing lights out there, but we are proposing, I think, four lights on this building, four new ones here. And so they're the typical lantern-style lights, and the, it's LED lights, and the LED fixtures set up inside, so it's not, you're not gonna see, you know, it's all downcast and shielded. And same thing with the, the, these are just little security lights that are on the garage bays. I'm sorry, that's right, that's two sheets. That's both buildings, so on this one again, there's existing lights here that we're utilizing, and then we're proposing, I, I think, three new ones here as well, like the proposed parking areas. The rest is just utility, uh, construction details, I do have a... So this is one thing the state's requiring us to do now for, uh, cause we, you know, you have any, uh, New Hampshire Fishing Games reviews this as well, because we have, whenever you have a hit on the, uh, data check website, you have to go through New Hampshire review with New Hampshire Fishing Game as well. So this is a result of that, as well as notes on the cover sheet.
What was, I forgot, what, what is it that has to go to Fishing Game?
Oh, the plan gets reviewed by Fishing Game, which they've done.
For what, what are they reviewing it for?
Just to make sure, so they're reviewing it for, in terms of endangered species, and the impact on endangered species. So you, you file the data check, and it comes up with a list of people-
Is that part of the AOT, or?
Yes, it's part of the AOT.
Okay.
So...
But I thought we had the AOT already?
We do.
Okay.
And so they've already looked at it, and this is a result-
Okay, so Fishing Game has nothing to do now, because they've already done it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so they've already chimed in, and these are flyers that they always ask us to put on the plan, basically, so the contractor knows when he sees one of these species to, you know, stop their work and notify Fishing Game basically. So the hog nose snake, uh, wood turtles, and spotted turtles, so... And those haven't been found, you know, there's, there's no sightings on-site, they're all, you know, they go out a couple of miles, so... Somewhere in lich fields. And, just utilities. So here's the building elevation, I mean, y'all know what the buildings look like, it's a nice-looking building. I think there's some red ones out there, uh...
So they basically match the buildings that are there?
Yes.
Thank you.
And every other building that's going up in town.
There's a little variation.
Not much.
It's a nice-looking building, I mean... But, I mean, we all know that this type of housing is needed, um, and, I mean, this isn't gonna be affordable by any means, but... It's typically filled by, you know, young professionals before they go out and buy a house. Uh, not a lot of kids associated with it, if I... So... I think that's pretty much it in a nutshell, and certainly answer any more questions you might have.
And then, can Mr. Chamberlain, uh, board members, before we get into, uh, discussions, does anybody have any questions not regarding the traffic analysis? Let's get those ones out of the way before we delve into, uh, what I'm sure most people are looking at.
I, I had some comments on the proposed approval language-
I'll come right back to you, Ms. Tracy.
But I don't know if we wanna get into that at this point.
The proposed approval language? Let's hold, let's hold off on that until we get to, cause I know Ms. Tracy has a question as well, if you wanna, go ahead.
Um, I, I, I heard you say there aren't a lot of children, but I did see some out at a bus stop. I'm just wondering if there is any plans around having a bus stop. I noticed, um, the buses don't go inside of the complex, and they do, like, down at Society Hill, they used to sit, sit where the entrance was, and it's very busy in the morning, and there's kids running around, so they moved it over to the parking lot, and I think it's like the extra parking lot. So where your dirt parking lot comes out right now, with the gate, is that's going to be paved?
No, that's emergency access.
That's just emergency access, so where's the, so where was that other parking lot with the extra going to be in relationship to that?
So if they, if they wanted to pick up kids on-site, they could come in here, at the clubhouse?
Okay, are they allowed, are they allowed to do that? I don't know.
I've heard-
A lot of times I hear that it's private property and you have to-
Yeah.
Yeah, you have to pick them up. That was only my concern, because I have, driving in the morning, you see a lot of kids running around right out at the edge of, um, the, the main road, so, if there's any consideration for that.
Last ti-, last time I checked, there were less than a dozen kids in that complex.
Yeah, I, I would say it was probably eight, eight kids outside, but they're right there on this main road with everybody coming in and out.
They have parents.
Uh, sometimes.
But there aren't, there aren't that many there.
Right.
It's a pretty low percentage.
That's all, thank you.
Any other questions not regarding the traffic impact or the proposed language? Just to get those out of the way in the beginning.
One thing I did, I forgot to mention is that we do have a waiver request.
I did see that.
Okay.
I did see that, we'll get to that. It's our favorite one regarding fifteen-inch trees, so, we'll handle that eventually. Any other questions? Nothing? Alright, traffic impact analysis discussion, and, uh, also with Mr. Disco's proposed language. Who wants to go first?
Well, I- Actually, can I interrupt?
Yes, go ahead, Casey.
So the board has yet to accept the application as-
Correct.
-complete, uh, acknowledging that there is a complete application, it might make sense to accept the application.
Move on that first, okay.
I will so move.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Moved by Ms. Christian, seconded by Mr. Anketell to accept the application as complete. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, all abstaining, that is six zero zero to accept the application, and the clock starts today. Okay, board members, we can either move on to the traffic impact analysis and the consideration of the final language, or we can kinda get that fifteen-inch tree situation out of the way, for the one waiver.
Cool, you do wanna make, I'll make a motion to waiver the requirement for the fifteen-inch trees.
Do I have a second?
I'd second that.
Nelson made by Mr. Disco, seconded by Mr. Anketell to waive, what is it, the counting of fifteen-inch trees? Is that what the language actually is? To grant the waiver.
Any trees over fifteen inches have to be documented or-
Any further discussion?
Based on strict conformity, right?
Mr. Disco?
Oh.
Strict conformity or hardship?
Because I know there's no trees there, I'm-
You've got one or two choices, make it-
The, I don't like these choices, but alright, because it's, it's being unnecessary hardship to, yeah.
Okay, did your second still stand?
Yes, um...
Okay, any further discussion regarding the waiver? All in favor of granting the waiver, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, all abstaining, that's six zero zero to grant the waiver, okay. Neil, Nelson, whichever one of you wanna go first with your, uh, separate issues?
Oh, it, it had to do with the proposed language that I noted in the, uh, this is the cover letter from Casey, and it has to do with, first of all, um, uh, here's, uh, item number, under recommendations on page two, first of all, there is a, they're asking the applicant to address comments from the peer review consultant, uh-
You're talking about number five?
Yes.
Okay.
I thought I said that, number five, okay. And, uh, I wanna know what they are, I... Have a lot of reviews by Fussin' O'Neill in here, and I'm not sure what's the final one that applies in this particular application.
So, if I, if I may?
Yeah.
So they issued a review letter beginning of December.
Okay.
So, and then we went through and addressed all their comments, and, and that's what this plan set represents. And we did a response letter, and we resubmitted that the beginning of April. So they've only had it for a couple of weeks, so they probably haven't gone through and gone through everything. They might have a couple residual ones from that, but we have addressed our initial- residual ones from that, but we have addressed our initial review.
Yeah, I just wondered what they were, and, uh, I.
It was all like minor cleanup stuff, there wasn't anything major.
I'm gonna ask the staff the same question.
Yeah, I mean, I can pull out the letter, it's, it's in the file, um, but yes, they, the applicant did respond to Fuss and O'Neil's initial review. It was a lot of cleanup stuff, adding various notes to the plan, making minor changes. Uh, I noticed that the applicant addressed nearly all of them, uh, keeping that condition in here just to get the last few addressed before any plans could be signed.
What about the, uh, secondary review regarding the traffic analysis?
Uh, yes, so there, um, the applicant has not had a chance to respond to that review, cause that came in much later.
Okay.
Okay, cause I, I guess I'd like to know what they are, if there's outstanding things.
Yeah, if you give me a moment, I can dig through it.
Okay, please do, while we're doing that. Uh, the other thing, uh, I noticed in this recommendation letter, uh, there's recommendations from the fire department are in here twice. Uh, once on page two, under recommendations number six, and then on page three, um, recommendations, uh, number, uh, number, uh, let me see here, these are, um.
I, I saw that too, and I think it was just a, a duplicate of.
Yeah, but it.
Putting stuff in.
Yes, it's in there twice, that's all, I just point that out. I, I recognize.
Yeah, they're the same.
I recognize, it's the same, it's the same language.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They've just got them in there twice.
Page three, six A.
I think that, I think they're past that. Uh, on page four.
Yeah, that's what's wrong, it's on the wrong page.
Yeah, there might have been a small oversight, I, sometimes we have to split comments from the fire department into the, um, the general conditions versus the conditions that needs to be addressed immediately. Uh, so we might've just had an oversight when we were doing the copying and pasting.
It's just a duplication of the same thing.
Yeah, yep, so if anything, it's just more teeth.
Yeah, I saw that too. That was a cut and paste.
That's all I have, Mr. Chamberlain.
That's it, okay. Mr. Anketell, anything to add?
The, uh, in order for them to move ahead with the building, he had said that you have to, one of the, one of the things is that they have to begin construction of the other phase? Or is it that it has to be complete?
I believe it's only beginning construction, Casey, correct?
Beginning.
Uh, yeah, the, the wording is substantial.
Does that include, um, uh, like occupancy permit, stuff like that?
Occup- yeah, it, it doesn't.
It's just substantially building completion?
Yeah, just well on their way.
Okay, thank you.
More than just clearing the land.
Yeah. I would assume it would be foundational, the shell of the building, probably utilities.
I would think that it should be occupied myself, but. Thank you.
Yep, anything else to add, anybody? While we wait for, uh, Casey to, Ms. Christiansen, please.
Um, I'll make a motion if it's all right.
I don't know if Mr. Disco, Mr. Anketell wants to wait for Casey to bring out the, uh, the comments that he's waiting on.
Yeah, I'd like to hear them.
I did have one other thing that the, uh, applicant wanted me to ask.
Yes, Mr. Chamberlain.
And I don't know, he's, uh.
After we do the conditional final approval?
Oh, something he'd like to, I guess if it is, if, if it is the board's inclination to give a conditional approval, whether they'd allow or entertain, allowing him to do any construction onsite as far as getting the pads ready.
Getting?
Like earthwork to build up the pads, no, no utilities and no, uh, structures being built, just some.
You mean prior to substantial completion on the other site?
That and prior to getting final approval.
I would be hesitant to say yes.
I, I, I wouldn't say yes to that.
Yeah, I, I.
Not that we're there yet, but I would personally say no, I don't know, I'm sure what the rest of the board says. It's not looking positive, just by faith.
I mean, originally, you're, you're supposed to only build four buildings, and we're supposed to get some aspect of commercial, and now here we are talking about
I would say yes.
Two more buildings, I'm not sure what's going on.
No, I understand.
Uh, should we discuss the, uh, the traffic analysis prior to the vote?
Waiting, waiting for the com- yes, I would say.
Yeah.
Prior to the vote, bring up any, uh, issues you'd like to be heard.
So.
Please, go ahead.
So regarding the, so you got the traffic analysis back, and it's been peer reviewed? Um, what I'm seeing here, though, is that it's, the staff notes that this traffic analysis will be reviewed by NHDOT. Uh, and the state may require some offsite improvements as part of the process. Because what I'm seeing here is that there's something, a total of five hundred and twenty-two trips per weekday, uh, puts it at a, a rating of an F. And that, that
So.
Complete analysis, does that, that includes all of the flex space down the road and everything, right? That's what was all part of that? Or is this just the site?
No, it's two separate analyses, so we're, one site, one traffic study is just for this proposed expansion. And then the other one is for the, the rest further north. So, that one, so as far as the DOT and the permitting goes, that requires a di- a driveway permit for the new entrance on the, uh, Daniel Webster Highway. And this one's already approved, but we're adding to it, so now we have to get it reapproved, basically, and that's a separate permit. So there's two different DOT permits and two different set, traffic studies. Now, we did it overall for the whole thing, but specifically for this one, that's what, uh, we're talking about. And when they talk about a level of service F, that's to leave the site, so it doesn't, it's not talking about out on the main line. That's, the only reason that's causing that is cause it's so busy and it takes time to leave, it's a stop condition, so. The only person that's, only thing that's affecting is the people that are leaving the site. So they have to wait, it's basically wait, how long you have to wait to get, get break in traffic to leave, and that's what causes the level of service. So if there's no traffic out there, the level of service would be a B, cause you don't have to wait. So, under a stop condition, that's the only thing that's, it's the only thing that's, it's affecting is the, the wait onsite.
Is there still a, um, northbound right lane, uh, the deceleration lane, if you will, to enter the site heading northbound on, on Daniel Webster Highway? That was in and out, now I don't know if it's in or not, yeah?
Uh, that I'm not sure of, where that stands, um, I've been involved in the offsite, on the, on the traffic study on this, like I said, that's being handled by Viness, and I don't even know what the concept is, if, if any improvements are required or not. Typically, that's, uh, a separate issue, because it's in the state right of way and it's handled by DOT, so. Now, whether that's in or not, I, I couldn't say, say. I do know that when we did this originally, it was not in, we did put a left turn bay into the site, obviously. Uh, and we did a lot of work to relocate utilities, cause we did widen the road. We had to widen the road anyway, because you had to put that, uh, you know, we had to put a taper in to avoid the left turn bay.
Yeah.
So we did have to widen the road on the original approval.
Yeah.
And so now if there's a right turn lane required, he's gotta widen it again.
Yes.
And relocate all his utilities again.
Well, I thought that was in, and I wanted to know if it was in, which is one of the reasons I asked the staff to look into that right now.
As, as far as I know, it's pretty much just, you know, a lot of technical stuff that Fuss and O'Neil was looking at as far as the traffic study, I mean, they agree with the numbers and stuff, so.
I don't have a problem with a, with a right turn lane there, that's, I don't think that's absolutely necessary. The left turn lane coming south, I think is, is absolutely necessary, just, there's no traffic significant.
I believe there's one there, there's one currently.
There is one there, headed south.
Yeah, and I, and that's, I think that's necessary. I don't see a, a ne- a need for a right turn lane going north, it's, you're gonna get there, you're just gonna turn right in.
Well, I just wanna know what was recommended by the traffic engineers, and whether it's in or out.
So I'm, I'm still curious about the way they're taking the analysis from, you're saying that this is only affecting the, the people leaving. But when you have five hundred and twenty-two trips leaving or entering that property, that's certainly gonna affect the road that it's on.
So.
So I'm not sure how, it, they, they took the analysis within the property?
No, so you go out and you, you measure the traffic that's on the street, and you apply the new traffic, so in this case, we're only talking thirty-three, thirty-three new trips in the AM peak, and, you know, forty-three in the PM peak, which is really the time you're concerned with, is the AM and PM peak.
Uh-huh.
So they measure the traffic on the road, they measure what the proposal's gonna generate, and they put that to the intersection, the stop condition, and they come up with a level of service, so. But the level of service is the stop condition, leaving the site, that's what the F is, it's not anything out on the main line. You don't look at that, that's not, that doesn't get.
That's not the people stopped trying to take a left, or people trying to, like, people trying to take a left across DW? That doesn't calculate that?
No, the level of service is for leaving the site. That F is for leaving the site, it doesn't, it's, that, nothing to do with people, I mean, that's, I'm sure that causes part of the delay, but it's mostly just to get out of the site into the flow of traffic.
Well, usually they'll give you one for the, uh, left turn, southbound as well, which is what you're asking about, right?
Yeah, I, I mean, as a whole, like, I figured the complete analysis would include all of that.
It should.
It does.
It does, yeah.
But the level of service is the intersection.
But it may not be.
The delay of the stop sign.
So we're the main DW highway, and you are, that's the intersection we're talking about, that intersection is a level F?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I'm trying to get to.
The F part applies to people, he's saying, applies to people leaving the Gilbert Road site, the Gilbert Crossing site.
It's the delay to get out.
Are you guys thinking about anything to remedy that? I mean, obviously you want these above, you know, uh, market rent apartments to have a high level of service, right?
So, you know, that's up there, again, that's up to the traffic engineer, but based on what I've, my understanding is that it doesn't meet signal warrants, so, um, and I don't think you want a signal out there. You don't want, you don't want another signal.
No.
So, it's just, it's just a delay for, to leave the site. I mean, another signal, it do- it doesn't meet signal warrants, and that's really the only way to remedy it, is to put a signal in. So, and DOT doesn't want signals, trust me. So it's, you really have to meet the warrants before they'll approve a signal.
Signals, yeah, think of, uh, exit eleven before the lights were fixed, is what would, it would be far worse than what it currently is.
Yeah.
If we started putting traffic lights out there. Not that, that means it's good now, cause it's definitely not, and this will make it far worse, but, you know.
All right. You got something, Casey?
Yeah, I, I did find where, um, Fuss and O'Neil addressed, uh, the signalization issue, um, and so they concur that this does not warrant the need for, um, a signalized inter- intersection, um, and that it should only be considered in the event that accidents occur more frequently in the future.
They will, but, um, besides that, they're not requesting a signal. Is that to say that, will the roads bad, put up with it? Is that? I know this is a DOT road, I, I appreciate that, but I mean, is that the state of New Hampshire telling us, well, uh, you know?
I think people figure out how to work around it.
Yeah, is that? That's what I, that's what I'm receiving, what it sounds like, DOT and Fuss and O'Neil are saying, yeah, traffic lights won't help, but it's pretty bad. And that's the end of it?
But.
I don't think the letter's implying that they're necessarily, necessarily.
Well, I'm saying, what I'm saying is that are they putting forth a remedy to possibly make the situation better?
No.
No, that's, okay, that's all I was.
Do they say anything about a right turn northbound lane in that analysis?
Uh, that's not a recommendation that they have.
I believe it exists already.
I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's striped, but they did widen the road.
It's wide, it's got a wide shoulder.
It's not striped out, but the road is wider there, coming off, going northbound.
It's not an official right turn lane.
Yeah.
Okay, it felt like it.
But the breakdown lane, like.
I drove there, uh, a week ago.
Yeah, the breakdown lane, what would be there is far wider than it is on the rest of the road.
Okay, but it's not striped as a, okay, I, I know it was talked about, and whether it was in or out, and I never fuck, remember, I don't remember how it was settled, I think it was gonna be settled in this final study, that, you know?
Yeah.
Famous last words.
Yeah.
Any other points of discussion, board members? Ms. Tracy, please.
Um, I'm just wondering, I go back to this access road again, because I feel like that might be a really nice place to put another exit and entrance, um, that could alleviate some of the, the, so, cause I've been through this intersection. Um, I'm thinking, you know, between the hours of probably four thirty and six, it, there's a lot of really stop and go traffic there, so it's not actually as hard to get out. Before that, around two thirty to four o'clock, there's a constant stream where it, I think is more difficult than the, than the, the traffic, and, and vice versa. And you have all those, it's just such a rough section there, because you have the, the dog daycare, you have the bagel place, you have the homestead. You have all of these things going on, and that if there could be another access road, this is just my thoughts, down at the other end where people could kinda just even come out and just go right, or something like that, to the, to the street, I think that would alleviate both traffic and, and the possibility of accidents at that center. And it would be a good place for a bus stop for kids, so.
So, the ultimate goal is to connect these two, there's a loop road, and this has been submitted and reviewed. Uh, around to, pretty, I think it comes out right at that location where that gravel road ties in, so. This is the ultimate goal, to build this, and at some point, there'll be something in between, and they'll be connected. Uh, and so you will be able to come around here and get to the signal if you really have a problem getting out here.
So none of it's just a gravel, you're talking about gravel.
No, I'm sorry, right, so it'll be gravel for the interim, but at some point, this will be, get developed, this, the last remaining piece here, and there should be you know, they should be interconnected, so you could work your way over to get to the signal.
That's where the retail, or the supposed retail would have gone, correct?
But as long as you don't have a signal, you're gonna have the same issue regardless of where you're accessing DW highway. If you're coming out and you're gonna go north, you're not gonna have a problem, because you could just blend in. If you wanna go left, you're gonna have an issue regardless of which access road. If you don't have a signal.
I, I agree with that, but you also have a, a bigger span, especially because you, people are stopping, almost hitting each other at the bagel place right now. They're all coming around, so this is all tied in to like that one area right there, so that you've got the people pulling into the doggy daycare place. If you had something down further, you wouldn't have all of that stop and go, stop and go, stop and go. That, that's just my thoughts.
All of that stuff is controlled by the traffic light at Bedford Road.
Well, the, the traffic light at St. Cobain.
Well, no, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, heading north, yeah.
It's everything in between those two lights.
Yeah.
Where it seems like everything is concentrated.
Yeah. Everything in between those two lights, it seems like there's plenty of traffic.
Most, most.
Plenty of traffic all on that road, yeah.
Further discussion, board members?
Well, I just wanna say for the record, with regard to your remarks, we've been told time and again by, uh, by Kevin, that they don't want a connection between the residential and the commercial, and they don't want people going
When you say they, you mean flatly?
But, ye- yes, yes.
Yeah, just regard, yeah, Mr. Walker's comments, he has said that multiple times.
Yeah.
He does not want them intermingled.
Well, I think there'll, there'll need to be at least an emergency connection.
I'm sure, I'm sure the fire department will, absolutely want that.
Yeah, fire department will, urgent.
Yeah, I, if he's, if that's his, if that's his stance, then I stand corrected. I know we had shown it, when we started the conditional use permit a long time ago, we had it connected, and then it went away, so.
Yeah.
For that reason.
Yeah, this deviates, I think, from the original plan, and it, is, we, didn't we ask that a road goes behind everything to connect everything?
Yes, that was the original concept, but that was way back.
That was, that was, that was before they dropped the big box retail idea.
Right.
They had a big box at that one point.
And I think, I think that may come back when they get into the retail.
In the middle.
Part of it, yeah. It's not there now, but I think it may come back.
That really, I, I believe.
Yeah, I'm not sure what I missed, cause I thought that was always still a thing that we were asking to know at meetings about this road that they didn't wanna put in.
Hmm.
I'm not quite sure how that just got dissolved.
Well, they've come to us with another plan for a road that does loop all the way around through.
Right, right here.
And it's, does not include the residential portion of the site.
It was kind of an exa- I mean, even when that was just a big empty field, that trail had been there.
Yeah, it should have been there since the beginning.
Kind of ATV trail. Anything else, board members? Does anybody want to put forth a motion? This has been accepted as complete, and we are currently.
Paul, can you read in the added condition? Paul, can you read in the added condition?
Yes, before we get to that.
Yes, thank you.
Bring that, uh, before we get to approval, let me just put on the record that staff has put an added condition, and it is follows as required by the mixed-use conditional, mixed-use conditional use permit governing this project, the applicant shall provide an updated fiscal impact analysis to show the impacts of the proposed site plan to the satisfaction of the community development department, so that will be added along with the standard, uh, conditions.
Because it's gonna basically update, this will be an update to an existing plan, right?
The fiscal impact will be updated, yes.
Yeah, that's, that's what I meant, yeah.
Any questions regarding that, anybody? Do we hear a motion for, against, any more comments?
I'll make, I'll make a motion that the board grant final conditional approval to the application, with the precedent conditions to be fulfilled within six months and prior to plan signing, as well as the additional, um, condition added this, or enumerated this evening.
Motion is currently made by Ms. Christensen, do I hear a second on the motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Dano, do we have any further discussion regarding the motion? None being seen, all in favor of Ms. Christensen's motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All abstaining, that is five, one, zero in favor of conditional approval. Thank you, Mr. Chamberlain. Back to the agenda, item four has been, uh, pulled revoked, how can I think of the word, Casey?
Withdrawn.
Withdrawn, so we will be skipping item number four. Item number five, discussion, Paul, what's possible action regarding other items of concern? Do we have any? Casey, any from you?
Yeah, nope, none.
Any board members?
I just have a question.
Yes, Ms. Rankettown, go ahead.
Um, I have a question regarding, so, i- if I recall, we did the regulations when we went, when we reviewed and we, we had a discussion about, um, storage containers on properties, or large tents per se, like...
Like car covered?
Like car covers or whatnot, but also, I guess more particularly what I, uh, most specifically what I'm thinking about is the, um, just the big, they look like the freight storage containers.
Or like almost tractor trailers without the wheels?
Like tractor trailer without the wheels?
Like MyBox?
Yeah, like a MyBox or whatnot, and we, didn't we, well, pretty much say you can't have them? Like, I thought we weren't allowing to have like large storage containers on, on properties.
I don't know if that would have to be, given what they are, that they're not a tent, if it would have to be put on a site plan if you're changing something, or I would have to look at the, uh...
Yeah, so, um, and I, I guess...
I don't remember anything.
I don't.
Believe they're temporary structures.
Was it just the car tent, is that we kinda said, hey, you can't have anything over, well, building code says anything over ten by, whatever, you need to have permits and whatnot, if you're using it for things, so I know that, that was, had something to do with it, but for some reason, I was in the, I see him somewhere, and I'm like, huh?
Why is that there?
I'm like, why is that there? Like, um, and, and it, it's more specifically, it's the, uh, the tomahawk, so, um...
Oh, yes, that's on our radar.
They have two units out behind the building.
What are you talking about, the tavern?
The tavern, and, and don't get me wrong, I think what they did over there looks great, and the outdoor seating and everything, it looks, everything looks, um, great.
Are those allowed?
So, I don't know if they're even using it as storage?
No, they actually, so this is what, why I'm leading into this, is that they're actually using it as a staging area for their weight staff, so they have their, they have stuff in there that the weight staff is going in and using these as a space, so they're storing dishes and, and silverware and...
Across the parking lot, the right way, however you want to call it, yes.
Well, we say driveway, but...
Yeah.
That property line ends there, and the owner, the, um, the auto repair shop next door owns all that, and it's not, actually not even town property.
The auto repair shop owns everything on the other side of the...
All the way to the back of the tr- to the trees, he just let, he just lets people drive through there.
They, they, Canel's owns behind the building, but...
Correct.
To, to the south of the building, Silvers owns.
But to the south of that, it's not really, they could put a fence up and then you can't get through there.
Right.
It's not a, that's not a public access way. So, they're walking across, I guess you could call it the parking lot, not really a, a driveway, but they're walking across the parking lot, going in and getting, getting stuff...
Yeah.
For their business, and to me, that's more, that's more...
It actually is a driveway, because you can go be- behind the building and then down.
Yeah.
You don't have to go across Silvers, you can go down behind the building, so it is a drive.
It is a drive, yeah, so you can go behind the building.
I would say that's more of a risk for them, because I mean, if Silvers wasn't...
Oh, it's a definite risk for them, um...
That's, that's a community development issue to research.
Yeah, so I, so I...
Is there a service request regarding that, Casey?
Service request. Uh, we were recently in the, on that property, and we snapped some photos, and they also have a sign that they didn't get a permit for, so...
I mean, it looks fine, and if they're using it for their patio furniture to store over the winter, which I thought it was, you know, I'd be like, yeah, whatever, to each his own, it's not in the way, but it is taking up space, and it is, I just, it came to light.
Service request.
Yeah, they're using it for, they're using it for business, they're not, they're not just using it for storage, they're going in and out of it, you know?
Well, that reminds me of, from when a restaurant in town was using, was using, uh, Watson Park as a parking lot for their staff.
Uh, Buckley, yeah.
Well...
I'm sure, yeah.
Not to mention names, but...
Anyway, service request.
Yeah, what do you mean by service request?
It means it's not on our plate, it's...
It's not on our plate, but it is, anything, anything to discuss.
It's worth bringing these things up, and bringing up to the attention.
It is, and again, I wouldn't have any issue, other than the fact that I, I'm like, wait a minute, they're using it as a...
Okay, on to the next, uh...
They're using it.
Any other, uh, items of concern, discussion? No, on to the next item, which is approval of the minutes from April fifth.
I move to approve as distributed.
Twenty-twenty-two. I have a motion made by Ms. Christensen, do I have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Ms. Tracy, any discussion?
Oh, yes, I have discussion.
Go ahead, Mr. Disco.
Um, on page, it's, uh, page number three, item number six, it says, "The applicant shall address any remaining peer-reviewed comments from Fussin' O'Neill regarding drainage." I think that that should reference the memo that we discussed that evening from Fussin' O'Neill, in which they cited several things, that, um, uh, Tim presented it, he, he presented it verbally, he didn't hand out the, uh, the memo, and, uh, we discussed it, and we, it was my understanding that in approving it, we approved it with these recommendations that Fussin' O'Neill made. Um, there's a few of them that I think are important enough that, that they should be
In the minutes.
Documented somewhere, other than this memo, which may or may not ever wind up in the same file as this.
So number six should say, "Address any remaining, et cetera, et cetera, based on the memo dated."
Memo dated, uh, where's the date on here? March eighteenth.
And that'll cover it.
Twenty-two.
Casey, did you, did you get that?
That'll cover it.
Yeah, that's what I'd like it to do.
I, I guess I'm not following, um...
Um, you got the memo, you got the minutes.
Yeah, I'm looking at the minutes, yeah.
You got the page three.
Mm-hmm.
You got to pa- number six, okay?
Yep.
And it says, "Any remaining peer-reviewed comments from Fussin' O'Neill, as documented